Good evening, everyone. Calling the August 19th Norfolk School Committee meeting to order. Welcome back, everyone. I'll start our meeting, as I always do, by reading our mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Have a whole call, please.
Peter Schwalbe.
Lauren Vivas. I was about to say gray champagne. It was a hybrid, Midori champagne. Promise.
Lisa Shalum.
Ingrid Alardi.
Next on the agenda is public comment. We did not have anyone speaking tonight, but it's like no one wants to, so that's great. Moving on to correspondence, we have no correspondence to report tonight. Just one item for me on the chair report. We have to approve some gifts. Looking at Exhibit 1, the first gift is in the amount of $3,226.80 from the Norfolk PTO, and that is for Scholastic Books for HOD. The next one is also from the Norfolk PTO, $1,287.11. They are for math manipulatives for HOD. Again, from the Norfolk PTO, in the same amount of $1,287.11, math manipulatives for Freeman Kennedy. Then we have a gift from Vision Inc., DBA O'Connor Studios, in the amount of $223.35. If you remember, that was the gift from last meeting. We weren't sure what it was. That is the profits from our school pictures, the company that we use, and so we are going to put that into the gift account to offset field trip costs. So looking for a motion to approve all the gifts listed.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Thank you very much to the Norfolk PTO and to O'Connor Studios. All those in favor? Aye.
All right, great. So the first item that we have on the agenda tonight is we have, over the summer, hired several new administrators in the district. Some of them started with us late spring and others started with us on Monday or yesterday. So I wanted to, before we start the school year, have a chance to introduce to the school committee our new administrators. I'll go through each one, and then we put them first on the agenda because we have a very busy new staff orientation tomorrow morning, so they can meet you, greet you, and then head home, because they have to be here really early. So first, as you know, Victoria Saldana resigned in the end of June to take another position. She was our Assistant Superintendent. We restructured that position, and we are welcoming Katie Young, who is in the audience, as our new Director of Curriculum. Katie comes to us from north Attleboro, correct? Attleboro, okay. She has been the Director of Math and Science there for the past couple of years. Prior to that, served as a math specialist in Foxborough for a number of years. Actually, Katie worked, I hired Katie many, many years ago, as a 4th grade teacher when I was in Foxborough. So she started yesterday and will be working, and actually worked hard today, on solidifying PD for our staff for opening day and meeting with math specialists. She'll be meeting with them tomorrow to finalize plans for the math rollout. So welcome to Katie.
Thank you so much. I'm really, really glad to be here. This has been a career goal for me for a long time, to land in my own community that I live in and just love so much. So I appreciate everyone's faith in me, and I am looking forward to working with everybody.
Great. So welcome to Katie. Tim, is Tim running around trying to open the doors? All right, I'll come back to Tim. Our new Facilities Director is working on fixing the doors that weren't open for everybody tonight. So returning to HOD in a new role, we have Kristin Gaffoon, who was the prior Assistant Principal for the HL of Day School, and beginning in July, transitioned into the new role as the principal. So Kristin, many of you know is a familiar face, but you've probably been hearing from her all summer if you have children at the HL of Day. I think both students and staff and families alike are, we're all excited to welcome Kristin to her new role. So Kristin?
Thank you so much. It's an honor to take on the role of HOD. Greatful, and I'm super excited for our great school year, a little bit.
And then next to Kristin, we have Rebecca Austin, who was recently hired into the role of Assistant Principal for the HL of Day. Kristin had a search committee that interviewed candidates over the summer. Rebecca is coming to us with experience in the role as an Assistant Principal for a charter school, correct? And has had lots of experience working with our younger learners. So we are excited to welcome Rebecca, and again, trial by fire. She started yesterday morning and spent the morning and the day in an administrative retreat with myself and with our leadership team. So today was her first day, actually, at the HL of Day. So welcome to Rebecca.
Thank you very much. I'm super excited to be here.
Great. We hired two other new people that started. We have, as you know, we had Roxanne Bordeaux retire after, I don't want to say, I think it was over 35 years.
Significant time.
A significant period of time here in the district. She was our prior Human Resource Director. We did restructure the business office and HR office, and we hired a business specialist, an HR specialist and a business specialist. So Jill Revola is our new HR specialist, and she began with us on July 1st. Talk about a time of year to start in a new HR role. She has been onboarding people left and right and coming with appointment letters and contracts, and it's definitely quarries and everything. It's been very busy, but we are thrilled to have Jill here. She came to us from Bellingham, worked in the central offices in Bellingham, and has a lot of HR experience, has her degree in HR, her SHRM certification, so very well-qualified, and we're excited to have Jill with us.
Thank you for having me. It's been great. Norfolk's a generally district that adore the town. I've been going to the Wednesday farmer's market. Very jealous of my town. Unlike a lot. But Roxanne did an amazing job in the HR department, setting it up. And so I'm looking forward to taking the reins and bringing some changes and streamlining to come.
So welcome to Jill. And then Ally Hamilton was the, for the last three years?
Two.
Two years. The main Office Secretary at the Freeman Kennedy School. Ally has a background in business and finance and has a lot of experience working with state, with the state, around grants and budget development. So Ally transitioned on July 1st, and she did two roles, actually, two roles for the end of the year. She supported the Freeman Kennedy office and then ran down and supported the business office. So she started officially in April, correct? Was it April or May?
April.
April. And then full-time in our office now that the school's closed, and she is running the business office. So welcome to Ally Hamilton.
Thank you for having me here tonight in a very busy summer. I'm looking forward to seeing you starting.
Yeah, that's right. Summer also is a busy time in the business office because all of our materials, all of our ordering, all of our grants, and your finance report. So again, it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose for everybody that's just joined us this summer, but have done a great job, and it's a wonderful team to work with. Tim Chenard also joined us. Matt Mallenridge left the district, went to work in Dedham, and Tim joined us as our new Director of Facilities back in, what was your start date, Tim? I can't remember.
May 5th.
And he has been on board all summer, leading our facilities team with many capital projects. He will be giving an update a little bit later in tonight's agenda about the accomplishments the facilities team has made. Tim came from a similar role in North Attleboro prior to this and has been doing a good job, and we're thrilled to have Tim here for us. And I think you guys met him when we talked about solar panels, but not officially. So welcome to Tim.
Nice to meet you all. Again.
So thank you all for coming and for meeting the committee. Feel free. I know you have very, very busy inboxes and lots going on, so you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go. Thanks for joining us tonight. Next thing I have for you tonight is our school readiness update. So as I said, it's been a really busy summer across the district. We have a lot of students in the district, so we have been running programs in partnership with Norfolk Rec Department, so we've had a lot of kids engaged in rec programs here. We also have had summer tutoring and some special education programs running all summer, so it's been busy with lots of students in and out. Our district administrators, as I just said, have been involved in search committees. So we were filling the Director of Curriculum position, the Assistant Principal position, classroom teaching position, so they've been working hard to make sure that we're staffed and ready to open. We have our district math coaches, who have worked with Victoria Saldana, have really stepped up over the summer. They filled the gap with her absence, and they have been coming in to inventory the math materials that are coming and arriving, making sure all teachers have what they need, supporting the plans for the opening PD day, and developing some recommendations to help teachers launch the new year. So they have been here and busy. We'll also be at the new staff orientation tomorrow to talk a little bit about the new math program. Our facility staff have been working hard to clean and get both schools ready to open. They're in great shape. We weren't able to do a tour earlier tonight, but if anybody is interested, happy to tour the facilities with you. They did do one major project over the summer. The HL of Day playground, playground surfacing, was tired and in need of significant repair. We saved quite a bit of money by doing that in-house. So Tim and his entire team did the surface replacement under the direction of a rep from Smarty Systems. It looks great. They were doing some finishing touches today, but that is complete and ready to go. Our secretaries have been enrolling new students, getting buss routes established, and again, onboarding new staff members, all kinds of things that have been happening. At this time, all of our classroom teaching and general teaching positions have been filled. We have the new administrators, who I introduced to you earlier this evening, and the only open positions that we have at this time, we are still looking for a part-time food service assistant. Our SAC program, and we've talked about this before, we struggle with staffing for that. We have, all year, last year, were unable to hire an extended day site coordinator. We in the past have had one at HL of Day and one at FK, and that factors into the number of students we can bring in. Tony and I talked and restructured that, and we're advertising for one site coordinator shared between the schools at a higher salary rate, hoping to draw a candidate, but that is still currently open. We're also still looking for a couple of assistants for the extended day program. We hired our permanent building sub from the Freeman Kennedy into a classroom teaching position, so we are still looking for a permanent building sub and then a part-time technology support position. That we started advertising in July. We have not been able to secure a candidate as of yet, so we continue to advertise for that. Other than that, we have, all of our positions are filled. I think we were, I was really, really impressed with the caliber of candidates we were able to recruit for those open teaching positions. I'm excited for the new staff orientation tomorrow to get to spend some time with our new teachers and new paraprofessional staff members. Over the summer, the tech team, again, we only have three full-time employees that work with the technology team. They were pretty much straight out. We had several large projects that went on. One was the upgrading and installation of a new public announcement system at the HL of Day School and upgrades to the system here at HL of Day. We also, the old Blackboard Connect, which is the emergency message system where you get calls from me saying there's no school today because of the weather, that whole system had to be replaced, and so we onboarded a new system called XR Messenger. So they had to do all the background work with, you know, importing all the data, making sure that runs. So they got that all set up. We did have some security camera equipment that needed to be repaired, that was damaged during snow removal, that they were able to take care of. Again, we have over 1,000 pieces of laptops, equipments, iPads, all of which were brought in, upgraded, serviced, screen repairs, all of that kind of work. And then almost all of our curricular programs are software-based, and so we have the new Amplify. They had to set up staff and student accounts for all of those software programs. We're using a new password management system to make it a little bit easier for students, so they don't have to have separate passwords for everything, so they also worked on uploading that. So they've been busy. Student enrollment, we have registered quite a few new students this summer. At the Freeman Kennedy, it's pretty consistent with past trends. We've got about 12 new students entering. Last year it was 13, so that's pretty consistent. HL of Day, we have 16 new students that have registered, which is about double what we had last year. So it's interesting. We still are seeing a decline in the K enrollment, so that hasn't really rebounded the way that we expected. I have had more requests for homeschooling for kindergarten than I've had in the past under Mass State law. They are not, you're not required to have an approved homeschool plan for kindergarten unless your child is six before the start of the school year. So we've had a few of those, but we have had more kids entering first and second grade. So 16 students overall. Last year we had eight. I'll continue to update the school committee over September and October with regards to enrollment status, because it seems to be sort of steadying out, but we'll watch that closely, and I'll fill you in. Our new staff orientation is scheduled for tomorrow, and we will be welcoming all of our new teachers, paraprofessionals, and any new subs to the district are invited to attend. The morning, we spend a lot of time going over just HR, technology, orientation. We do an overview of classroom management expectations, the two primary curriculum programs, so Amplify Math and the HMH Literacy, Intereading, and Into Literature. And then the afternoon, we divide, and our classroom teachers in professional positions spend time with their mentors, preparing for opening day, going over the first weeks, things like that. And Jill and I, Jill just stepped out, but Jill and I will be meeting with the pairs and new subs to go over some information that's important to know about working in Norfolk. So we have that set. We also did, as I said, have an administrative retreat on Monday with all of our new administrative staff, department heads for SAC, food service. We have a new Assistant Director in Food Service as well. It was a really, it was a great morning. We had a consultant come in, and we really worked on team building, getting to know each other, and then strategies for building effective communication. We had to, I'll share the video at a later time, but we had challenges that we had to work through, and then we talked about how we could learn from those and carry that over to planning and collaborating and being creative and innovative. So it was a great day. And then opening day for staff is scheduled for Monday, August 25th. We are going to begin with our opening comments, introductions of new staff. We have some activities that I can't disclose at this time, because it's a surprise for our teachers, but we have some morning activities, and then in the afternoon, per the contract, the teachers have time to work in their classroom for the second half of the day. Anybody from the school committee, you're always welcome to join our opening comments. I know Lisa will be sharing some opening remarks, but anybody is welcome to come and have coffee if you want to be part of that day. So overall, I think at this point, our schools are in great condition. We're well-staffed, we're well-prepared, and we're ready to welcome our students back. So happy to take any questions that anybody might have, and at our next meeting, I'll update you on how the opening of school went, but I think we're really in good shape.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
You had indicated an uptick in, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly, that if a child is six before the start of the school year, you have to approve a homeschooling plan?
Yes.
But wouldn't those children have been K-eligible last year?
They would have. But we have some parents. So you're required to enroll in school as of the school year following your sixth birthday in Massachusetts.
Okay, that is basically the question.
So some families may have chosen not to send their K-eligible students in and kept them out a year, and now are deciding to homeschool for kindergarten. So they're not going right into, you can be six and start in kindergarten, but if you're six before kindergarten starts, you do need an approved homeschool plan. Does that make sense? Or did I just confuse it?
No, that was how I was understanding it. It was more the question surrounding eligibility for, like, so I guess my question then would come back to, should, this is more for my, I'm just curious now. Should those families elect to then have their children re-enter the public schools?
They would enter in first grade.
But they would be seven in first grade?
Yeah, so it would still be, meet the age requirement. So entering kindergarten, you have, in order to enroll, you have to be five by September 1.
Oh, no, I'm aware. I have a September 5th birthday.
Right, but we do have kindergarten students that turn six by September 1 that are just entering. Sometimes families decide, you know, their child might be young or still napping, or they don't feel they're ready, and they start the following year. So it's not unusual to have a handful of students that are six.
So it's not delaying it, in my mind, it felt like it was delaying it more than in that scenario, but it's not.
Not really. It's usually kids with late summer birthdays, you know, August, end of August birthdays. But we do have some five and six-year-olds in kindergarten, and this is the first time that I've had multiple kindergarten eligible students apply for homeschooling. So that's a little bit different.
Okay, interesting.
Any other questions?
Sounds like we're well-prepared for a good year.
We're good to go. Ready to go. Next thing in your packet is the flu vaccination clinic. So this is per policy, if we are partnering with any outside businesses or agencies, by policy, school committee has to approve the event. Walgreens in Norfolk has, for years, offered an onsite flu and vaccine clinic for our staff members or staff members' families. I think I've been here 14, 13 or 14 years, and they've been here every year. So it's not a new event. We have a proposed date. They're willing to come on Thursday, October 22nd. They come to the Freeman Kennedy School Health Offices, and then after school, any staff member that wants to come to get their flu shot can come over and do that. It's usually busy. We have a lot of staff members and family members that come that day. So I am looking for a vote to approve Walgreens coming to offer a flu vaccine clinic onsite on October 22nd. So moved.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next in your packet is the quarterly update from the BIKO Collaborative. Again, BIKO is the collaborative that Norfolk is a member of. There are 17 BIKO communities. They provide specialized programming for students with unique special educational needs that we're not able to necessarily meet in district, because we don't have sufficient numbers to offer programs. Under the law, we, you approve and review the BIKO budget every year, and we do quarterly updates. So this was sent by the BIKO Director. Some things to highlight, we had been concerned a couple of years ago that enrollment was dropping in BIKO, and so they were having to increase tuition. If we send a child out of district to the BIKO Collaborative, we get a significant discount as a member. So most of our students go to a collaborative prior to a private day placement. We were worried about the viability, financial viability, because BIKO runs on tuition. But they've done a lot of work in order to kind of expand and build programs to shift to the changing needs that districts have, and I think we saw the benefit of that last year. We saw more students referred and more students enrolled. At this point, we've been asking, the Board of Directors have been asking for more data around students that are offered a placement that don't accept a placement, as well as students they aren't able to accommodate. So we can try to determine, do we need to develop different programs? Are there different needs that aren't being met? So they included that in the report for you. And then some highlights of things that they've offered. They did have a disability awareness fair at one of their schools. They did, like, we went through the DESI Collaborative Program Review, the Compliance Review, that looks at federal and state compliance with special education laws. Collaboratives have to do that same process, so they did complete that last year. They are awaiting the report of findings, so I'll share that with you when we receive it. But they've done some really nice work. They also moved a program into a public school in Walpole, and that program and that school was renovated, and we're leasing space there. So one of the BIKO programs is now housed there. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, but that's all of the details, and all of those things are included in the BIKO report. All right, next, we had talked about, through the budget process, the need to increase our substitute rates to make them a little bit more competitive. We've had difficulty filling some positions. We had hoped to be a little bit more ambitious, but we weren't able to because of budget. So these rates reflect a slight increase from last year. Again, I think they're consistent with the market. They don't really put us ahead of the market, but they will help us keep competitive. So we're proposing the changes of rates that are in your packet, and I'm looking for a vote to approve the new rates.
So moved. One second.
Are these based on an eight-hour day or a six-hour day, or what's?
They're different for different positions. So teachers are 8:20 to 3:20. Our paraprofessionals are seven hours, but it's a half-hour unpaid lunch, so it's six-and-a-half hour workday.
You said this puts us kind of in the middle?
It keeps us current with the market. It doesn't give us a significant advantage. We just can't afford to fund that this year. But it does keep us, if we don't make a change and adjust the rates, we will be behind. And for most of the subs that we have, they are in multiple districts, because we don't have daily work. So if they're paid more and we can't stay competitive, then we have an even greater need to fill.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. I'm going to turn it to Tim, who is going to come up, you've got to come up to a mic, Tim, and he will give you an update on facilities.
All right, so I usually keep my sessions pretty quick, so I'm going to run through some stuff we're doing, some things we're going to finish before we get going to the school here, and if you have any questions on anything, just let me know, and I'll be happy to answer it, to the best of my knowledge. So over to HOD, as Ingrid had said, we did finish the Smarty Surface Playground Resurfacing. We finished that today. We've got a couple of little things that we're going to tweak over there and clean up the playground before kids come in, but as far as we are concerned, that project is open and complete. So we also have a playground in the back, it's part of the Kundai Forest. We did a little refresh with the wood chips back there and relayed all the matting down, so that's a little cleaner for student use and community use. We just started today the prep for the HOD boiler project, so we have, both boilers will be out by the end of the week, and then we're going to have the new boilers in the building. We're planning to have them in before kids start, but that project will be ongoing through the beginning of the school year, but we'll be ready for heating season in October. As is normal, we did our summer cleaning at both schools, which is stripping and waxing floors, carpet cleaning, deep cleaning the classrooms. We're in the process of doing the gym resurfacing in this school right now. We finished our landscape cleanup yesterday at this building. We've got a little bit more work to do over at HL of Day, and then we still have a few things. We have to do some patching at the Freeman Kennedy Playground. We're having some issues with that surface, which is another project that we're continuing to work on. Did all of our mechanical HVAC PMs for the spring, and we're getting ready to start doing the boiler PMs for this building. We're going to have brand-new boilers at HOD, so ready to go there. And then we just did our safety inspections with the building and fire departments, and we passed without any issue there, so we are ready for kids. So, any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, thanks, Tim.
Have a good night, everybody.
Great. Next on the agenda, I wanted to update the committee on the status of the Bay State Emergency Shelter. As you know, it was scheduled to close over the summer, and it has closed. They are fully off-site and off-premises. There are no remaining families. That closed at the end of July. All of the families that were remaining as of the date that the shelter closed were able to find permanent housing, so there were no families that went from this shelter to another shelter site. As a result, there are no families that would be eligible to return to Norfolk Public Schools through the McKinney-Bento Homeless Act, so we anticipate, we do not anticipate that we will be transporting or having students return. Everyone is permanently placed. We are also going to be receiving the second payment in August. We don't have the final amount. We just know that it's scheduled to be coming shortly, so I will update you on what we receive. That funding should come in, as I said, at the end of August, so that's scheduled. And we also had worked with the town on, I had worked with the Department of Ed to expedite the reimbursement for transportation, for the McKinney-Binto Transportation. Typically, it's a year out. You receive it the following, we would be getting it in May, but because of the emergency circumstances, we were able to get them to agree to fund that in a quicker turnaround. We worked with the town so that they set up a separate account. It's overdrawn at this point, so when the money comes in, it will go directly back to the town to close that, rather than being held against our budget. So that is where we are with the shelter. Any questions on that one?
Is that final expense you're referring to that's coming in August, that's all transportation?
No. So we received a reimbursement of $104 per day per student, and that comes in multiple payments. So we received a payment in, one in November, one in March, and one, the final payment comes in August. So that $104 a day is additional money coming into the district that can be used to offset, you know, future costs. It can be carried into next year related to educating students with like needs. So that will be coming in shortly. The transportation was separate, because under the state law, if we have a child that becomes homeless, we have to pay for transportation back to their school of origin. We don't have a budget line for that, so we paid the cost out of our operating budget. The town agreed to set that up as a separate account, knowing that the reimbursement would be coming in, so that we weren't spending previously allocated budget funds. So that account is overspent, knowing that the reimbursement will go directly to the town. So those two things are coming in in August.
The $104 per day, are there restrictions on how?
There are some, but they're fairly general.[1795.94] There are some, but they're fairly general.
Okay.
So we may use it to offset, for example, the salary of one of our current L teachers, and then be able to reallocate some operating budget money elsewhere. So we'll know what that final amount is hopefully soon. Budget update, just wanted to let everybody know. At the last meeting, I shared that some of our federal entitlement grants were currently held and were not available. Title I was authorized, but Title II, III, and IV, which we typically apply for, most are about $10,000. It's about $30,000 in total, a little more than that for Title II. Those were held for federal review. They've since been released, so the funds are now available for us to apply for. So I will be submitting those entitlement grants. As I shared before, Title I, we typically use to offset the cost of our math coaches and our math paraprofessional support. Title II is a teacher quality grant. We will probably be using that to focus on funding for professional development and support for the new math program and to fund the math review committee. Title III is a regional grant, and that is targeted with funding the LPAC and tutoring services. That's what that fund allows. And then Title IV allows, we used it last year for training for safety and lockdown training. It is part of, Safe Schools is part of that grant. We do have mandatory suicide prevention training. That is something we have to do this year, is every three years, so I expect that grant will help offset some of those costs. So I will be writing and submitting those grants, but we are back to where we anticipated being with, throughout the budget season in terms of receipt of federal funding. Any questions on that? All right, the last one is, we saved the best for last of my part. This is exciting. So as you know, last year, we, well, I would say the last seven years, we've been working on a potential plan for expansion of the Freeman Kennedy to offset the continued growth in enrollment. As I said, next year, we have nine second-grade classes. We have enrolled more second graders, so thank God we added that ninth class, because we would have been way over the policy limit. But enrollment continues to grow across the district. We have gone through multiple iterations of applying to MSBA for grant funding to offset the cost of a building project. After three years of applying, or it might even have been four years of applying, we went forward to the town and asked for funding through the town only for a feasibility study, completed that full feasibility study, moved forward, and unfortunately, were unsuccessful at the ballot in securing funding for that project. You know, difficult times. I think most people were concerned about the impact on taxes and a tough economy with inflation. So after that, the building committee met and talked about next steps. We recommended trying one more time to apply to MSBA. The school committee voted to allow us to submit that application, as did the select board. I wrote the application for that grant. We had additional supporting evidence to submit with the grant this year because we had the full 250-page feasibility study, all the content that we have on the website for the building project. So we reapplied, and I got a call Friday that we are being heavily, or strongly considered. We're in the finalist phase. We have never gotten there before, so this is huge. They are coming with their team of senior engineers and project design review panel to the building on September 11th. They'll tour both facilities. They will meet with a team. We have the current town manager, a member of the select board, the two building committee members from the school committee, both principals, special education director, two members of the facilities team. They gave us a list of who they want to be part of that. It's going to be a working meeting, and it's the final stage of review of the potential project. If we make it through that, then the following weeks, they will be recommending districts to offer funding to, to their board, and their board will be voting. So if we were selected, the reimbursement rate in the past has been about 52% of project costs, which would cut a $40 million project in half, more than in half. Huge opportunity for us, so fingers crossed. I will update you after the September 11th visit of where we stand, but it sounds like the turnaround vote for the board is very shortly after that time. So exciting news. So stay tuned. Hopefully, we get through that last hurdle, but it is really exciting.
Do you know historically with like that last hurdle, do they cut out a bunch of applicants that have made it to that round?
So they didn't tell us how many final site visits they're doing, but it did not sound like, I mean, they're committing the resources of their full project team. So I don't, I think, the impression I got was that we have really good odds to make it to this stage. So fingers crossed. And that's what I, that's all I have for you tonight.
Congrats, thanks, sir.
That's exciting, really exciting.
Everybody just don't jinx this.
Yeah, everybody knock on the door.
Thank you.
Sure.
Moving on to new items, we have a school partnership application from Scouting America. I think with the, it's all right with everyone else, we should get a motion on the table to prove them as a school partner. Then I will read their application. Then I'll read our school, our criteria, and then we can talk about it, provide the history. Does that work for everyone?
That sounds great.
All right. Looking for a motion.
I move to approve the application as laid out in Exhibit 5, submitted by Scouting America.
In a second? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to read what they wrote. So Scouting America, Mayflower Council serves 63 communities south of Boston, including Norfolk, Massachusetts. We work with community volunteers to provide the Cups Scout Program through PAC-80 for boys and girls in grades K through 5, and the Scouts BSA Program for boys aged 11 to 18. And the next question, that's who they are. The question is, describe how the organization's individual's purpose is aligned with assisting the NPS School Committee in achieving the mission to provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Scouting America, through its local units such as PAC and Troop 80 in Norfolk, is deeply aligned with the mission of the Norfolk Public Schools and the School Committee to provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens. Our national mission is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout oath and law. Locally, PAC and Troop 80 provide Norfolk youth with year-round opportunities to develop leadership, citizenship, teamwork, and service-oriented mindsets through hands-on learning, community involvement, and outdoor recreation. Our programs complement classroom education by building essential life skills such as responsibility, perseverance, and respect for others, skills that directly support students in becoming engaged learners and compassionate community members in a rapidly changing world. We aim to support families and educators in nurturing the character and potential of every child, reinforcing the shared goal of preparing youth not only for academic success, but also for lifelong contribution and leadership. And then a description of any planned and anticipated activities that may occur during the upcoming year. Council-wide fall and spring recruitment programs, usually in September and October and in March and April. Both the PAC and Troop meet monthly and have events that support the mission of each program throughout the year. So that is their application and their answers to the questions. And then looking at the criteria of what makes a school partner. We're looking for a partnership, a two-way benefit to both parties, working together or separately towards accomplishing a shared goal. The organization's school partner's proposal establishes a direct educational benefit to the Norfolk Public Schools. Their organization's purpose is aligned with the Norfolk Public Schools' mission. And then considerations when approving an application. Is an official partnership really being sought, or is the partnership necessary for the desired results of being sought by the organization? Most organizations want to get more information out to schoolchildren for events that may be of interest to parents and children. However, an organization need not be a school partner to get this information out. Non-school partners are able to get the message out to parents via postings to the community news section of the NPS website, also included in the weekly district news. Or perhaps the organization may not realize they are able to get their message out, and under the impression they must be a school partner to get a message out. Questions to consider, is the proposed partnership meaningful? How often and how much work do the parties do together? What does the NPS gain by the existence of the organization or lose if the organization does not exist? Does the organization fulfill a gap or need that NPS is not able to provide, like advocacy, boosters, or enrichment, tutoring facilities, maintenance, sharing, and student services? And does the partnership proposal establish a meaningful educational benefit to the Norfolk Public Schools? How is the work going to be performed in the proposal directly related to the mission of NPS? How is the work to be performed in the proposal directly related to the strategic plan of NPS? So that is really what we need to think about when approving school partnerships. So the motion's on the table. I don't know if you have anything to add?
I can say what the history was around school partnerships, because I think it might be helpful. So this policy was actually developed before I started in Norfolk. But what the school partnership, the reason it was developed, in the beginning of the school year, traditionally, many outside organizations want to send information about special programs that they offer to the parent community. So whether it's an art program, various sporting leagues, music enrichment, all kinds of fun engineers, those kinds of programs that are offered locally. So they would send information out to parents through student backpack flyers or through our Connect@E-mail system. The feedback that the school committee and the superintendent received at the time was that parents did not want outside organizations directly marketing to students. The school committee, as a result, had to think about how they were going to manage that, because you can't arbitrarily say, yes, this organization can, no, this organization can't, because then you have a discrimination issue. So the way that they approached it was to establish school partners. School partners are allowed to send information through school resources, so either through backpack or through the Connect@System directly emailed to families about events or things that they're sponsoring. The criteria was that these organizations have to exist to provide a direct educational benefit to the Norfolk Public Schools, not just to students that participate in the organization, but to the school system as a whole. There has to be an ongoing working relationship, and as a result of that, then they are allowed to use school resources. So that was the criteria that was established. In addition, school partners have discounted rates for facility rentals. So if they're doing a program here, they're able to do that at a discounted rate. For facilities rentals, all nonprofits also get discounted rates, so you don't have to be a partner necessarily for discounts on facilities rentals. Agencies are also able to send material. They're able to post flyers on the community bulletin boards in school or on the community news section of our website, but it can't go directly to students. So the only thing that really, if you have a school partnership you're allowed to do that is different from other organizations is use our direct email system to send information or to give flyers to students to take home directly. We have very few school partners. We have the Norfolk PTO, who as an organization exists to support the Norfolk Schools. We have the Norfolk CPAC. CPAC is under state law, a requirement, they're an advisory board, Parents Special Education Advisory Council, that report to school committee and support programs for our parents. We also have NCL, the Norfolk Community League. Historically, Norfolk Community League, they offer teacher grants, so teachers write grants to fund special projects. They have provided funding for parent seminar series and workshops. In the past, they did an internet safety program for Norfolk parents in partnership with the technology team. They also have supported resources for student emergency, planning and emergency kits. So portions of their fundraising every year are reinvested in the Norfolk Public Schools. Typically, the communication they send out is around those fundraising events. We have the King Philip Music Association, who comes down, and they do concerts for our students. They also do an instrumental sort of overview for students to help them select if they want to participate in the band as they enter the regional middle school. So we have that group. And then we have the Norfolk Recreation Department, who you know works very closely with us. They have worked to develop programs to offset the shortage we have in SAC for before and aftercare. So they've offered morning programs on days when we have high enrollment in SAC. They ran the remote learning centers for parents during the COVID closures. So we have that partnership as well. I think we have, oh, am I missing Norfolk? Norfolk Lions, who also provide support and resources for families that are struggling, sometimes temporary heating assistance. They have an eyeglass program. They have also run different writing contests and things with the schools. I believe those are the only existing current school partners. So that's sort of the history of where it came from and the benefits. Again, it's just the direct email connection as opposed to the community bulletin boards. They're all, nonprofits are in the same category as school partners as far as facilities rental rates. Oh, NCTV is our other partner. I'm so sorry, they're here filming us tonight. They film all of our meetings and they broadcast at no charge to us. So thanks, partner, for that. So if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any thoughts?
I have some thoughts. As a parent that has been involved in scouting for 11 years, and the parent of a proud Troop 80 member currently, who has taught citizenship in the community, whose husband has taught citizenship in the nation, I think scouting is a great benefit to the community as a whole. I don't know that it, this application meets the criteria for a school partner. I think that it is, it opens, it opens the door, I think, for what this policy was designed to avoid, however I may feel personally about the organization applying, which is kind of a deviation from the stick, the strict school-based true two-way partnerships. I would say, as someone who's, again, a scout parent, I've seen a two-way partnership in the kids I encounter through scouting, who are educated very well here, and then I have a very light lift when it comes to teaching citizenship in the community. But, you know, and I think vice versa, you get, you know, wonderful individuals who are community-based and oriented towards volunteerism, and that's wonderful for a school system. But I don't think that it benefits the school district as a whole, the way the policy intends a partnership to benefit the school district as a whole.
Two, three thoughts, sir.
What about, we have Girl Scouts organization in Norfolk. Are they?
They're not, we only have those six or eight school partners that were mentioned. They have applied before, and they were not granted partnership.
But as a nonprofit, they would as well receive?
Yeah, they can still put information up on the community boards. They do sometimes send things to post on the website and do things like that, but they were not given a partnership for the same, I think, reasons.
I think some of my feelings about it, too, are informed by the experience we had last fall with an outside organization coming in and.
Fundraiser.
It felt a little different than the other school partnerships that, you know, we have, and the feedback I received was concerned, just around an overabundance of communication and emphasis on not necessarily school-related topics and activities.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you have to pay to be a part of the membership of scouting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe. I don't know.
Yeah, and I know scouting and like recreational sports are pretty different in that, but I see it kind of in the same ballpark, like if the soccer league applied or the basketball league applied.
We did have a soccer league apply, I think, last year, that wanted partnership.
Yeah, I just see it kind of in the same track as that, as, you know, the children and the parents have to pay to be a part of the organization, and in turn, you know, you can filter out the information to the parents trying to get them to.
Yeah, I feel the same way you do, kind of conflicted by it, because my kids have such a great experience.
No, it's, I mean, it's, yeah, wonderful organization.
You make great friends, you learn so much. So I don't think that's the question, but I also understand the intent of the policy. And I also understand the challenges of reaching out and actually accessing the community and accessing all the students and letting families know this exists, this is a great program. That is difficult. I know there was talk of a potential.
Yeah, we had talked about, and I know HL Day last year did a community resource fair on the native open house, where different groups could come and have a table in the gym, and anybody who was interested, again, we're not sending, but parents could opt to go and gather more information. We have a brand-new principal and a brand-new assistant principal, and Open House is coming up very quickly. So I'm not sure where they are in that, but we have talked about, and when we met with the parent group that was working on the Equity Committee, we talked about having, trying to do a resource fair. So that is something that I think we're very interested in pursuing. And that is, I know we did a wellness fair with local groups last year that Dot Pearl coordinated, but trying to find an event where we could have different organizations present and families could come and learn more about what's available in the community is something we could, is something we're interested in pursuing and considering.
I think that's a great idea, and it would be a great fit for, you know, partners like these, where families especially kind of entering to the school system are unfamiliar with everything that.
Or how to access or where to find the information.
Where to even register or enroll. There's so many people who miss the deadlines to enroll because they don't know about it. So just kind of making it more accessible and information.
All right, any other thoughts on it?
All right, any other thoughts on it? All right, so the motion was to approve the application as a school partner as written. So, all those in favor? All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
And.
I feel bad.
I do, too. I wish, but I understand the intent of the policy. I'm hoping we can think of creative ways to get their message out there and get other organizations. I think the.
Like a resource fair or something like that.
Yeah, the resource fair is a great start.
And I also think that's something we can partner. We found them at Community Day, so I don't know if that's still a place where scouting advertises, but I literally send my five-year-old up at Community Day, so.
Yeah, that's another great, a great avenue. And I, there is some transition happening at the town level, but that is also something that they can partner with us, because we've talked about having a way for families to, you know, new to town, be able to get information about what services are local. So, once that new hire comes in and they've stabilized that, I will reach out again.
Right, okay. I'm wondering if it makes sense to put together a standard response, I can help craft it, to organizations in the community who do apply, just letting them know what they can do, even if they're not a partner.
Yeah, we do usually send that information, but yeah, I think that's, I actually think this policy as a whole, again, it was developed prior to my coming here, and I do think it's maybe verbose and maybe could be simplified and clarified a little bit, so it might be a good thing for the Policy Committee to start with one of the policies we look at early on.
Great. All right, then, the school committee minutes are in your packet for our July 8th meeting, so looking for a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, September 9th. It's still that schedule. And then, I know you most likely will need to be at that September 11th meeting, and there will be a meeting coming up for initial pairs in September, the initial meeting with the pairs.
Yes, I received a proposed date this afternoon, so I'll send it on to you. I think it was the 25th, but I have to go back. It came in late, and I was running out the door.
With that in mind, with so many dates in September, I would love to do a retreat with all of you, but I also know that people are extremely busy right now, so thinking of pushing that off until things, we start the year, we kick off, everyone kind of knows their schedules, because I don't want to overwhelm everyone, but something's still on the radar, but I don't think it's September. I think now you have three dates.
Yeah, I mean, and it was questionable whether I was going to make that, and so, I mean, and the world doesn't revolve around me.
No.
I think it might make sense to delay a little bit.
Yeah. And then also, if we have a lighter agenda, we can weave some of those items into the agenda. Sure. All right, does anyone have anything else?
No.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.